I'll be there. Let's move her up and, and then.
Well, I'll just ask for an amendment.
Yeah.
Amendment, you do what?
Okay.
Uh, okay. So we'll open the meeting. It's technically six thirty-two, but for Monday, March fourteenth, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as maybe amended.
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the um, citizens input, let's put to number three. Um, liquor license renewals, let's put to number four.
Okay.
And then we have Ellen. I'm sorry, Ellen. I don't know how to manu.
It's Mino, yeah.
No, okay. And uh, put her at number five, so she can just speak and then.
Yeah.
Okay. And then Chris is on his way. Other than that, then everything else below will move down one.
Yep.
So are you moving that up ahead of four and five, right? They're swapping?
Yes.
Yeah, they're gonna slide down.
Yeah.
Seven and then back to eight.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So well, all in favor of the agenda is amended, please say aye.
Aye. So the next, what did we say is the next one is for?
Uh, approval minutes.
Approval of minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes of January February twenty-fifth. I didn't see anything.
I had nothing on twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Actually, I had nothing on either of them.
Yeah, so um, for motion to approve the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
In favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
I'm in town meeting draft of February twenty-eighth. Pretty detailed, Megan. For a town meeting, though, I think that was.
That was good.
Pretty good.
All right. So I have nothing there.
All in favor of uh, February twenty-eighth minutes, please say aye.
Aye. So now the next thing that we have up here is.
Citizens input. Citizens input. So that's, you know, and that because we didn't have a separate.
I said, put her five or whatever. So whatever.
Well.
For she, okay, so she can go ahead.
We can do Ellen now.
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
Okay. So Ellen.
Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, hi.
You're up. All right.
Okay.
I actually did on the select board too, but I've read through your, 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 your daughter or whatever. I mean, you know, you sent us in the paperwork of your Airbnb rentals or whatever. Um, you know, I'm, we're gonna end up going into executive session and a little bit later then come out. You know, in the past, it has been lowered. It has not been lowered. It has never been lowered to zero. So we take things into consideration.
Okay, I, I understand that, yeah.
So on a personal note, when did you buy that condo?
When did I buy it?
Yeah.
Uh, I think it was two thousand nine.
Two thousand, okay. I owned it. I sold it in two thousand and two.
That's funny, that exact unit, huh?
He's, he's grade A1.
Yeah, oh, that's so funny. I'm sure it doesn't look too much different, to be honest.
If you wanna speak here, you know, give, you know, give you, give you a situation, I wouldn't get into, you know, I wouldn't get into all the personal stuff, just, you know, you know, where you're at and, you know, what you would like and.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, I know my, um, I know I, you know, I had sent, or I'd sent uh, an email or, you know, sort of reasons why that uh, we didn't get, get to sign up for the short-term rental. Um, and it, it really was just because twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were really hard years for both myself and my partner, Brian, who um, co-owned it with me. But um, I, when I did go in, you know, finally, at where there, where you can log in to pay the fee for the yearly fee.
He's coming in.
I thought there'd be a place to either pay for the annual, for the fines, but that wasn't available. There wasn't anything there. And actually, what's that?
Yeah, you're swimming in and out. You might wanna take away the video and then that way it will free up some space.
Stop video.
There you go.
Is that maybe better?
It could be. Sometimes it works.
Okay. Um, well, anyway, so like I said, I, you know, I thought there'd be a, a place to kind of submit um, our rationale uh, on the short-term rental site uh, where you pay the, the fee, not necessarily the fine, but the year, the annual fee. Um, but it, there was nothing there. And um, the emails that came in and I had um, Chuck, who's no longer, you know, on the board, but then Chuck and Chet resend them to me. And I didn't, you know, I didn't, I wasn't getting them initially, the emails. I'm not sure why, whether it was just going to junk or whatever. Um, but so I wasn't getting the emails initially. Uh, and then the, the letter that we got actually had to be forwarded to a new address. So there was a couple of things going on that we just, you know, we weren't on top of, um, you know, applying for this short-term rental. So, uh, you know, it's not an excuse certainly, but it's a reason. Um, and I understand that there's like a fee to, to have this appeal as well as, you know, a reduction, never zero, but certainly a reduction um, of the fine.
So, so I'm just gonna say that there is no fee for appealing and.
Oh, I thought there, I thought there was. Sorry, sorry, maybe misunderstood.
Um, you know, and, and, and this board came up with the idea of trying to, you know, we put out saying you need to register and giving it to the zoning administrator to get it out to everybody. And there was, there really was, we, we did say till the end of June, and that was the end of June of two thousand twenty-one. So I, I've got your information. Um, just wanted you to speak. Um, I can um, email you back tomorrow with what we've done. Um, because we're gonna go to executive session at the end there, but there is no register, there is no fee for um, appealing. And um, I see that you also did apply for the short-term rentals that started this past November or whatever.
Yeah, so that should all be up to date at this point.
Yeah, so um, once we come through with this, then, you know, we do say that the, what, what we do knock it down to has to be paid within thirty days.
Yeah, and that wouldn't, I mean, hopefully that won't be a problem.
Flowing years.
Yeah, uh, it's by the end, it's at the end of the month, so.
Okay, so, so we'll, I'll get back to you tomorrow with what the uh, board has decided. And uh.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right. Wonderful. Thanks so much, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you for calling in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we're on to liquor.
Okay, go ahead. Is there?
There's six.
Anything? No hands.
Ellen still got her microphone on, but she's not talking. And you can block her. You just go to mute her on this end.
Yeah. No. Videos are.
Ellen, can you mute yourself? I'll take her out. She's removed. Put in waiting room, whatever. Can you go back up there and then just try to remove?
Really screwed up today.
Okay.
I don't understand.
Can you go up to Ellen?
Yeah, and if I do remove.
And they'll move? She just left. That's good.
She's good.
Okay.
Okay, she's gone.
So there's a Grosse, a Jam, Rich, a Wit and Kurt Peterson.
It's probably G Russ.
G Russ. Jerry Russell. Maybe.
Could be.
Does anybody have citizen's input?
Not seeing anybody.
Okay, so.
We could.
Next up is.
Okay.
License renewal.
Yep. And is.
Lucretia's not. The creature's not here. She had mentioned to me.
That's okay.
So I have one, two. So I have two, so I have Free Hub LLC, Base Camp Bike and Ski. Um, second class. Yeah, second class fee is paid. There's no changes. Last enforcement is within. Motion to accept uh, the town clerk to move forward with Free Hub.
Yeah.
That's my more, I'm just gonna do these three first and then separately.
Oh.
You're doing.
I'll be technical.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, okay.
No, I said yes.
Okay. In it long trail.
You're right. You're right.
In it long trail, uh, first, a third. Um, fee paid, yes. Last enforcement, November fifteenth, no changes. Motion to let the town clerk move forward on In It Long Trail.
All in favor?
Aye. Sherburne Golf Service Company, Green Mountain National Golf Course, first, third, outside, fee paid. Nine twenty-seven, twenty-one, last enforcement seminar, no changes. Motion to let the town clerk move forward.
All in favor?
Aye. So then there is Killington Restaurants, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Right.
Mostly the Peak Restaurants, No Shit Lodge, Skyship Base Station, Pyco Mountain Base Lodge, Wobbly Barn, Killington Grand Resort Hotel and Conference Center, Clubhouse Grill, Killington Base Lodge, Bear Mountain Base Lodge, and Northbrook Lodge Jerk Mountain Grill. They, I'm gonna make a motion to allow the town clerk to move forward as stated on the different ones for each here. There's all the fees are paid. All the enforcement seminars within twenty-one, within the two years or whatever, and there is no changes.
Right.
So motion for the town clerk to move forward with those for Killington Restaurants Inc.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Okay.
So if you can pass that on to Lucretia or Peggy, whichever one.
We just moved things around like liquor and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, you're fine.
Meeting's like.
Yeah.
Six thirty-seven, seven.
So we got up next. Now we're going back to number four.
Yeah, numbers, yeah, we're doing select order organization.
So four and five.
You got it, Steve.
Okay, so um, reorganization. What's not on here? It says rules of procedure first. First order of business is we have to nominate a chair and a.
That's what that is.
It says rules of procedures. Oh, so it's under rules of procedure? Okay.
So I gotta nominate Steve Penner in as uh, chair again for another year.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
You want it, right? And you could, and you couldn't nominate me for longer because I only have one year left.
Well, we can only do, we can only do one year at a time.
Right.
No.
Oh, you're good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I guess I abstain.
So I think what Steve was talking about, the next meeting that we have, it's just gonna be laying out like our rules of procedure of how we go through and everything and you know, citizens input and if we're gonna let them just speak in the beginning and the end or throughout, we, we let them speak throughout.
Right.
But we just wanna get that for us.
Yep.
And uh, and then there too is like what days we're meeting and what times.
Right.
We all remember.
Well, so that we can set up.
That we set up. But the town, the town meeting day is at seven.
That was the only one that was at seven. I'm here and put it in my calendar of the next couple of meetings.
Okay.
That's what I did.
So, all right, so.
Six thirty.
So that, so if you could set that up for the next meeting, Chad.
Yeah. And the, the next section, we do have s- some changes. Different than people that are stepping down from board in the commission. So Chad said he had a list of people.
I have the list here on the, on the TV. I did not print that. I forgot to print it. Basically, um, with the exception of one planning commission member and three people that I didn't contact. Yeah, I wasn't able to get yet. Um, and that's Peggy Pelletier and John Curtis.
Peggy Pelletier has already told me, is that's the, that's the regional ambulance. Yeah, she'll do it as long as nobody else wants it. She's, don't even, but she thought she was in for three years anyway. That, 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 that position's three years.
Yeah, I know.
Well, it says one year. So she's got two more years after.
Yeah.
Um, last month, so she's got another.
Yeah.
So you got another year after this.
Um, but yeah, Young Nam Kong.
I, yeah.
Nam, uh.
Nam, Nam Kong.
Nam Kong re-upped for both planning commission and the uh, Regional Transportation Council. Of Debbie Burke filled all of our other miscellaneous positions as she usually does.
Right.
Marissa Sherman, um, re-upped for uh, Development Review Board. Jessica Rawson has stated interest to become a, a full DRB member. She was formerly the alternate. Um, as, as Ken Wanzner has stepped down.
Um, Andy Solomon's back up, Recreation Commission, Evan Eman, Steve Nizinblatt back.
So why don't we just start here, Planning Commission? What do we? We have everybody, so.
We're, we're short one person on the planning commission at this moment.
Okay, so we're accepting.
We have Andy.
One person did not want, well, couldn't really be.
Yeah, he's not.
So Chris.
Chris has to step down.
Like to say, thank you, Chris Carr, for all your time in the planning commission.
Yes.
You know, welcome aboard here.
We do have, we still have Andy as a, an alternate on that, yeah.
Right, so.
Try to fill the permanent position.
So if you can, and, and I'll accept, uh, I'll make a motion to accept Young Nam Kong for another uh, three-year term.
Yep.
So.
Do you think Andy would wanna do it full-time?
He didn't want to.
Did not want to before, so I.
Just asking.
We're looking for some other people right now. We're trying to do some research.
All right, so you wanna just say, well, whatever, on planning commission. I was just gonna go through this or whatever.
Yeah, uh, Development Review Board is Marissa Sherman.
First approved planning.
Oh, you didn't do that one yet?
I just said I make a motion for Young Nam Kong to be nominated for another three years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, okay. Development Review Board.
Marissa is re-up, re-up appointment, and Jessica Rawson would be going for another, a three-year term to be a full member versus an alternate.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Marissa Sherman back and Jessica Rawson, welcome to the full, as not as an alternate. So for three years. So can you just put that in there, three years? So that way, we got it.
Oh, next to her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's three.
That's vacancies. You don't want vacancy. We don't have pre-vacancies.
So does that leave us with a vacancy?
That leaves us with an alternate.
An alternate vacant.
Okay. Okay, so are we looking for that?
Mm-hmm.
So we already said all in favor, we all said in favor of that.
So the Recreation Commission, what do we got?
It's Steve Nizinblatt and Evan Eman, both three-year terms. They both. Are re-upping?
Okay, make a motion. Welcome back, Evan and Steve.
All in favor?
Hi. Brother Regional Planning. Andy Solomon, motion for another year.
So moved.
Yeah. Debbie Burke, Town Service Officer. Everything else here is good up until what? So for Town Service Officer, Regional Ambulance Service, Rutland County Waste, you don't have any.
Yeah, actually, that's been vacant for a couple of years now. We're still looking for someone to take that.
Okay, so.
And Young's Regional Transportation Council.
Okay, so Town Service Officer, Regional Ambulance Service, Rutland Regional Transportation Service, and Fence Viewers. Um, Inspector of Lumber Shingles and Wood. Tree Warden, Ways of, Ways of the Coal, Town Forest Warden, and Assistant Forest Warden, as stated with those names on there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Good, second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. And then just put out whatever that we're looking for, those empty blank spots and the alternates.
Yeah, we had put the list out before and we had no new people fall in yet.
I have a question. Is there anything here like Ways of the Coal that we don't really have to have anymore?
Actually, there's two. That's a state requirement. There was two items, Town Agent and one other one that we were not required to have, and we did remove those last year. So, but the ones we have now are all still by statute that you have to try to fill those.
Energy Coordinator, I don't know about that one. That was, that was created because whatever.
That was, uh.
That was.
Wasn't it?
No. Post Mike Hodjelik.
Mike Hodjelik.
Todd Klosick. Yeah, so. I mean, for right now, I would, I would, you know, I think the planning commission is working on energy right now.
So if we can eliminate that one, I will.
Okay. Okay, so let's put it on the agenda, the same, we're gonna eliminate it, the next one, just in case anybody says no.
Right under the planning commission is one of their.
Yeah.
Responsibilities.
Put it underneath, uh, for the.
Dude, they covered it already.
Yeah.
No, I know, but just to have it listed.
But I'd rather just see as that we want it, that we're gonna eliminate it, and then if anybody has concern, they're saying, then step up for it.
Yeah. Okay.
Select Board Member Concerns.
Um. My question to follow up to yours at the last meeting, has Peter had any luck in finding the racks for the sign? That, at the bottom of the access road?
Not yet.
Okay.
I expect that to be, he'll be able to get some sort of mandate for it this next week. Okay, so.
No, cuz I.
Hold it, let me know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Get my, my minions guys have to do it all the time.
Okay.
Six.
Okay.
I saw Peter putting lights on.
Yeah, he was, he replaced the, those other five lights that were out.
Yeah, he, he, he ordered like eleven or twelve.
Right.
But he only got five in.
Right.
There's another six still out, so.
Should we just keep some in backup? Oh, yeah, we are. We're ordering, we're, right now, we got the ones that we gotta fill up, get all those replaced. We're waiting for them to all come in. But we are gonna have like two or three extras.
Uh, Kurt Peterson's got a hand up.
Shall I go ahead?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Kurt.
Uh, I might have missed something, but uh, are you gonna do something about the um, Sherburne Golf Corp, uh, Corporation?
Oh, on the agenda, we had Sherburne Golf Corporation. We had two, the two officers, which are you and Patty.
Right.
To re-up those.
Oh, that was listed at the top, yeah.
Thank you, Kurt.
I did miss, okay.
On the sheet. Wasn't up on the sheet.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
On the sheet?
It's an annual, uh, corporation appointments, so.
Oh, I didn't bring you off of that list that you put up there, that's what.
Oh, I didn't have it on that list.
It was here. It wasn't on the one with all the people stepping in like Debbie and Young and them.
So, Steve, do you still wanna be the Sherburne Golf?
Yeah, that's fine.
Employment? I'll make a motion to let Steve Penner in to be the Sherburne Golf Corporation, um, appoint in person, I was a commission.
It's, yeah, it's the corporation and Patty, Patty is the other one, Patty McGrath.
Did she say she wants it again?
Well, she said she would do it again.
Okay, so Chris and uh, Steve and Patty.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Put them back up again. I think I heard Chris say second.
Second.
Aye.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kurt.
Can we change it so it comes with the past?
Um, yeah.
I'm just.
Select Board Member Concerns.
Yeah.
Just where are we at with the police cruisers being ordered? Police cruiser.
We're ordering two, and they will be ordered this, probably this, the end of this week.
Okay.
Um, that's what we anticipate. Uh, Wit and I have been meeting and going through the process and looking at how we're doing it. We're looking for two options, leases and purchases, cuz we may not be able to buy two full cash, but we're just trying to get that arranged, but we will have those ordered this week.
With, I mean, we've been talking about it since first one forever, but I think it would be good to, we gotta get something going here because I don't see the supply chain getting any better.
Right.
Might get worse. Might be getting worse.
A lot.
They just shut down whatever semiconductor place in China because they had a thousand cases or whatever yesterday.
Put you back on the road to get us conductors.
Okay, do we have any other? Jim, you have anything? Okay. Uh. I asked my, my one question. So at this point, we would be down to, since we did citizen and liquor, we're down to uh, town financials, January, February.
Yeah, we have January, February financials. Um, I don't know if you wanna go through both individually. Um, but basically just passing through, we are uh, ahead where we normally are at this point on the revenue side for the town. We're doing well on that side. Uh, if you look at the treasurer's report, uh, you'll notice that we have. Uh, well, I was gonna look at the February. Um, we have nine point seven million dollars um, in, in the bank right now, five point two of which is due for the state. You know, two point four that it's in restricted funds, which leaves us about a million and a half um, still to the good on, on net cash. So I think, uh, you know, according to Lucretia, it's probably the best she's ever seen it at this point in the year. Uh, from a cash perspective. So, I mean, I think we're tracking, okay? We have a couple of things that have been going over budget and some difficulties getting some things. Uh, but overall, I think the town's financial performance has been on track. We're still in the overall within the budget. So I think we're, we're in a, in a decent place.
What troubles are you finding?
Troubles, um.
Same within budget.
A lot of the, the uh, highway equipment stuff, the, off the supplies for the trucks and things like that. We've had a lot of breakdowns and some odd, oddball things. That has been an issue this year.
Really?
I mean, not seeing, not, not getting it. Sand has been an issue that we went through two-thirds of the pile by the end of January, or the first or second week. First or second week of February.
That's now, though.
Yeah.
Definitely is.
Right now, we're doing.
Calm down, yeah, but I agree.
We, we actually had to start, we were starting to, to resupply our sand pile because we had really annihilated it there right at the beginning. Um, hopefully, we won't have too much, and it stays soft. The only thing the sand does for us, this is the time of year when we will, we will start to collect sand, not put salt in it. Because this is, it actually works really well for firming up mud sections, you know, where we just spread, cuz it's basically a stone product. There's
Yep.
No actual excavated sand. Um, so those are some of the issues there. I mean, uh, I don't see any other, I mean, it's really just highways and and, you know, the garage and, and the vehicles. I mean, that's where the real issues are. And it's just, you know, it is what it is. Fuel prices are off the charts. You know, propane's higher than, and it was last year, things like that. But other than that, everything else is tracking pretty well.
Do we ever lock in propane pricing ahead?
We pay, the way it's been for years and years and years, we have a, a percentage we pay over rack. So with their, whatever they buy at it in Albany is what we get. This year, we are gonna probably go out and get some additional pricing to see where we are.
To lock in.
The biggest, the biggest.
I did that once years ago, and I went to lock in pricing, just so for budgetary purposes.
Well, it helps that way. The, the actual concern that happened one other time when we went out was not with the propane portion, cuz they're usually all the same company. When we went to the diesel fuel too, where we, we priced everything out. The issue became, they treat it like a regular gas station where they show up every second Thursday or something, and we don't have fuel tanks big enough to withstand that if we have a big storm. So our biggest issue is running low on things like that. So it's something we will have to talk to in depth with any suppliers. Because we don't have very large tanks and, you know, we could say, well, let's go buy some, some bigger tanks.
What do we store for diesel?
It's about a thousand, two thousand. We have a one-thousand gallon tanker.
But CV oil does do lock-ins.
No, I, yeah, and we haven't done it to this point, so we, we can look at what.
They can show up every whatever.
We have no problem, cuz what they do, what, the one thing CV does with us is every time a truck's coming back from deliveries, if they have anything on the truck, they come and top us off.
Yeah.
You know, and it just.
Which is great.
Yeah, I mean, especially on the diesel fuel side. It's like, what a, what a, it's a giant help that way. But it is something we need to start looking at as what our options are. Uh, but that's, that's primarily the only skill issue out there. So like I said, from a cash perspective, we're in a good place, and I think budgetary, you know, we're still good overall, cuz we have some things that are under, but we are taking it on the chin with some of the truck repairs and things like that.
And is this report for the end of February or?
Yes, the end of February. This is February twenty-eight.
And how are delinquents compared to previous years?
We are.
You see, down thirteen, but.
We're, we're, we're slightly up in numbers, but not a lot in money. And I mean, it's, it's, you know, what's it, sixty, eighty thousand, something like that. It's not huge. Uh, for lenquencies, we, we have collected some old ones that we hadn't seen because we've had a lot of the real estate turnover, so we keep getting boosted on those, those items, you know, it's um. Yeah, we got, you know, we're at a hundred thousand on, on all taxes, thirty-one thousand on interest and penalty, so.
Kind of funny is like solid waste. We're down like seven thousand dollars in revenue.
Yeah.
No, we're down seven thousand dollars in expenses.
Right. It, it actually tracked.
Crazy.
Well, the, the interesting thing, because.
Goes to show you that excess garbage, we don't really make anything on it. It's just exactly what it costs us.
Yeah, I mean, when, with last year, I think it was when we had that big increase, we're seeing all the additional revenue and the expense almost matched it exactly. It's like, it's really just how the crowds are, are operating. So it's interesting.
Dumpsters are hidden now.
Yeah, and then.
And it's our, in our, and that, uh, our new dump guy, who's been there over a year, he's done pretty well with making sure everybody's got their cards in their past. That makes a big difference.
Then the other item in here that I was looking at is the the option tax money. We're adding revenue. So so far we're down three hundred and eight thousand. And with, you know, because the way they go, we'll, we'll be adding in the first quarter, correct? That will be coming up.
Yes, that's, that's the biggest one. And, and, and.
That's normally in the two hundred thousand or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, because when you look at.
Five hundred thousand.
Last year's actual for the, this quarter was seventy, for the, this past quarter, what we received was seventy eight thousand. We're at one fifty six this year.
Right.
So I mean, we had a tremendous, uh, fall, basically, uh, from an option tax perspective.
You know, so that, I think the next question I have is gonna expected to be answered in, um, legal, when we go into executive session or whatever. So just if, I'm just gonna bring it up because people might, if they do look at this, but underneath expenses for a police department, um, he budgeted five hundred dollars and it's at twelve thousand dollars. So I think I just wanna, we'll go into executive session after and then we can come out and say, you know, what it is. Okay.
It's the.
Well, I mean, I don't, you know.
No one is.
I'm not sure, so I don't want to hear it until we come out and then say it. All right.
Yep.
So, um, the treasurer's report. So January. We had ninety seven thousand dollars worth of receipts in the pro shop and forty eight thousand in the restaurant. I think what's happening again, it's a, and so like, then there's the trend, there's the operating loan. I, you know, I know that we borrowed the money in May or whatever, or April. So that would be the year before, but then when I go down to the dispersments for operating loan, there's nothing, but we paid that off in September. So I think that, I just don't think we have the number over there to where it is. And then the bond and loan payments, there's, you know, zero dollars going in there for dispersments. So if we can just take a look at it and, and straighten it out.
Yep.
So. Because if, if I look at the treasurer's report and I see that we have as of February receipts of a million five thousand. But if I go to the golf course, scream out national for February, um, and this is just on the pro shop side, um, I see we have seven hundred and twenty one thousand. Okay. See that? That was paid on January. I'm on February. Okay. So this is seven twenty one.
Yep, I got that.
Okay, but when I look at the treasurer's report for February and I see receipts, it starts off pro balance of July one was a hundred fifty seven, but then it has receipts and it says in February, we had a thousand eleven hundred and twenty dollars for a total of a million five. And then if I go to, um, the restaurant side, the second page for restaurants, um, total restaurants is a hundred and thirty one thousand. Um, but underneath the restaurant, I'm seeing for February, no, nothing coming in. That's expected, but a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars worth of revenue. And then it says total revenues between two is only eight fifty four, but if I look at the receipts, I'm only five and a hundred eighty six, I'm you know, I'm a hundred, I'm one point one nine one million. So we can just.
Yep.
Get that cleaned up. That's it for me on that stuff. Um, and then there was restricted funds. What are the, okay, orders adjustments that by twenty twenty one to there?
It was beginning balance adjustment.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept, um, financials.
Should we accept them knowing that we're not finding numbers of that up?
The town, except the town side.
All right, so I make a motion to accept the town side of the financials. And.
Well, in favor of that.
Aye.
Table, table the golf course until we get those questions answered.
I think what it is, is that we just have to start filling in those blank lines.
Yeah, the issue is, is I also think that you see the, the bond payments coming across for the revenue and, and it's not being delineated as the expense in the right place.
Well, that's what I was gonna add. It's an operating loan and the bond, whatever, and, you know, so I just think they have to get.
Yep.
They may not be, it may be showing to her as revenue.
Right. And. Well, it does, and that's how, that's how it's been done. It shows as a revenue and then we have to expense it out.
And I already argued, I, I argued that back in two thousand ten, eleven, we were paying somebody commission off of that.
Both, yes. Because the issue, the issue has become, and it's, and it's, it's something we've been going back and forth with the auditor because they're showing it as a revenue, but it's not technically expense. It's paid out of liability, so it artificially inflates the revenue size.
So this is.
And we've been trying to get this to really.
This is a funny thing. It's like, so my wife is, was a CPA in California and she's running, you know, whatever. Um, don't have to accept.
Right.
Your auditor's recommendations every single time.
No.
Your finance person, which is Mark, should, you know, you got, you should be looking at this with him and Lucretia, and then your Mark is hopefully gonna say, no, that shouldn't be done that way. It should be done this way.
Right.
And, and you don't have to accept.
Well, that's where we are. We sent those, we sent those questions to him like a couple of weeks ago and we're trying to get him because it, it just, it, it just throws off the, the financials and he's been doing it that way for years and we're trying to get that fixed. It was the reason when you remember when, when I started, we had the, we, you couldn't follow the operations portion, so I had them pull out the, 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 all the bond payments in and the bond payments out into a separate section of the general ledger so you could actually follow. But when you look at the treasurer's report, it's all there.
Right.
So.
So I just, all I'm saying is, is that just because an auditor says, oh, no, no, we, we like to do what we have to do.
Okay, and you want to table them.
Table, table it out.
Yeah, until they match up.
Yeah. Yeah, so that also means the treasurer's report, the treasurer's report.
Of that side, it has, you know, has that.
Yeah, it's got those numbers going into it.
What's this operating note?
Um, the operating note, um, I will have, I thought I'd have it today, the, to actually sign the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, the the golf course. Yeah, the golf course operating note, and we'll be doing that on the twenty eighth.
Can you just explain that so people like, we're not always, we're borrowing two fifty, but we're just getting a line of credit, I guess?
Yeah, in the past, we used to always borrow the two hundred and fifty thousand and we had to do it as early as January, almost every year. Um, we now have gotten better in a financial position. With the new bank, we are able to bar, get a line of credit where we only take it if we need it. Last year, we only used a hundred thousand of the two fifty. Um, we're hoping we don't have to use that much this year. Um, but at the worst case is, it's there for us in case we need operating cash in May and June.
And then, uh, the next meeting that we have, if we can get on the schedule to have an update from how we're doing, remember we had Mark run that for the, run the winter budgeting of where we were gonna stand and everything?
Yep. We talked about the cash flow analysis.
The cash flow analysis, if we can just get an update on that.
Yep. Sounds good.
And the manager's report?
Yeah, I have the, just wanted to have a TIF update. I don't know if you want to talk about a TIF. Basically, the, the TIF district, uh, we've been meeting with Vepsi. Um, there will be some modifications to the district based on requests from, from Vepsi. And we will be re, hopefully resubmitting those in April and then bringing it back to the select board for a readoption. Um, with the modifications and thereby going to the, hopefully the final meeting in next is where that's.
So when, when Vepsi sends us their recommendations, do we get to say why we would prefer it the other way?
Yeah, I would rather leave that for executive session. It's more.
I wasn't gonna go into that. I'm just asking if we could ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are. So.
Okay.
I always say, can't bring you up to date on that in executive session. Everything's still going good.
Yeah.
It's just, there's a little couple of things and, you know.
So I.
Which is to be expected.
Yeah.
By everything.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff brought me pretty much up to date.
Okay.
Making sure we can question something.
Okay.
Okay. Fire department?
Fire department. I included, uh, this document in your packet. Uh, this is the first draft with all of, uh, the explanations from, from the attorney on creating a resolution to create the fire department. Uh, not looking for any action, this just came off the press here around two o'clock today. Um, so basically, as you get a chance to take a look at this, if you have any comments or concerns or questions, let me know because we could then have this resolution prepared for the twenty eighth meeting to actually create the fire department, which will allow us then to start working on the rules and procedures portion of that. So we can, we can actually get the adoption going.
Everyone get a copy because I have two. Okay.
So, uh, we can post this like all over town.
The staff update?
No, the organizational chart. Well, that's the, that's the one that realizes who's on top.
So, so basically, we were, we were talking about some staffing, uh, questions and issues that we have with, uh, some, you know, who, what positions are open, which ones are filled. Um, basically, this is an organizational chart that shows what we have. Um, the items in green are the positions that we're now hiring for. Um, and we're looking for, you know, we, this week, Lucretia is still advertising for her assistant clerk, um, second assistant clerk. Um, we still have a highway crew member open that will be getting re-advertised again, that probably tomorrow. Wit and I have been working on the, the job description that we have for the officer position. We're going, by the end of this week, that will be also posted um, for, for an officer and we're gonna put it on all of the, the, uh, public safety websites and things of that nature where, where jobs are looked for. Um, obviously, the, the fire chief and the assistant chief are open position because we haven't, I actually opened the fire department yet. Um, and then there's the, the rec ones. Um, another point of note on the planning and zoning side, the director's position is still open. Um, that is, uh, I just had a good interview with someone two days ago and we're looking to do a second interview. Um, possibly later this week. We're looking to try to get everybody's schedules together, so we would have the potential of, of filling the director's position. Um, Jim is working as the interim zoning administrator and we have Lisa, who is our uh, planning consultant. And the reason I left that in green, not that we're trying to fill that position, but that's a position that would not be there once we go through TIF and the rewrite of the zoning. So that's a position that will eventually drop off.
No, we don't know.
Change, likely drop off typically.
We don't know.
That's why it's showing right now. We don't.
We don't know how much more work is still on for the TIF after you get a TIF.
Right. So, and then, uh, we also see the need where we're probably in need of a halftime person on the bookkeeping side now, and if TIF is approved, we know that we'll probably end up having to, to increase that to a, a second bookkeeper as well. Um, between the golf and the TIF, all of the utilities and the, uh, and our regular town business. So I would anticipate needing a position for that. So this was just to bring you up to speed on where we're gonna be. I expect the, the crew position and the officer position to be posted this week and hopefully if we are able on the twenty eighth to adopt, uh, to, to have the resolution signed to create the fire department, we would then be looking to how we're gonna deal with the chief and the assistant chief's position and also the, the rules and procedures of each department.
Just like when we went through some of these things in the past and we had the conversation with the fire department, we, we did say we have to clean out.
Yeah, yeah, and we, and we'll be, we'll be being advertised. We will be the full job description.
Both the positions.
Yes, that's correct.
Um, the police chief or the officer, I just hope that we're putting in, in the, um, what we're looking for with some kind of EMT qualification on it.
Our police.
Or willing to, if they're not willing to have the town pay for them to be trained for.
Yes, and, and we are, uh, we have already, the chief is looking to get signed up for the courses to do the, uh, the, the training for the, the EMT stuff as well.
So Wit, how long does that class take anyway? You there?
Oh, yeah, I'm here. Uh, it varies. Uh, I probably averaged four months.
Okay, so we put out an advertisement or whatever, looking for a police officer, okay?
Yes.
Either with EMT or, um, needing to get qualified within a year, that would be enough?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it also depends on when the courses are offered, but yeah, that should be enough.
Okay, so.
That's fair.
At least the person knows that they have to, if they don't have it, we could still take them, but they need to get EMT.
That's, yeah, that's a good way to word it. We've worded that. We can word stuff like that too.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
And the rest of the stuff on the recreation, Sarah's always here, swimming coach, lifeguards.
That's just giving you an idea of what there is. Well, she's already, she's said, I think it's either, it might be two weeks that are already filled.
Ten, ten lifeguards.
It's, it's really filling up. Yeah.
That's why I feel that's one department we need to grow.
And, uh, just the, the last item, just the grants update. Uh, we had two grants expire during the whole COVID thing that we couldn't do some of the construction and I was, they talked to by the AOT and we're gonna reapply and probably get those by April fifteenth if we make the application. It's structures grant. It's the Archie Baker Road Bridge and the culvert on the, on Barrows Town Road. So we get, we'll likely get those again and then we can get those done this summer.
So those are grants that were?
There were a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of a grant for Archie Baker. The project's like two forty, two fifty. Um, but we had a hundred and seventy five thousand. We just gotta reapply so we can get that, do it again.
Okay, and the cause for not getting them done?
Uh, couldn't get the parts and, well, the first summer, they shut things off and it was like, we can't get it because.
So what was the window originally?
It's, it's a two-year window, but we got it like in two thousand nineteen or right around, right around there, so.
Just hopefully they'll just reappropriate.
Yeah, the odds are and, and the fact that, because they still have the money and then on top of that, we still have always done well on the structures grants because very few towns apply for those.
Okay. Good.
Yes.
I'm surprised how many people from other towns listen to us.
So.
Okay.
Um, that's all I have for that.
You're good. Do we have anything under other business? I know we have some executive session.
Yeah. Uh, do you want to just throw it back out to these guys? I think we should put on, you know, like what we do, put it again at the.
Citizens input.
Yeah, so.
After executive, or before executive.
Before, before executive, yeah.
Yeah, so. This way they have a chance to say something in the beginning or, or all of a sudden something came to their mind. Anything come to your mind out there, Jan or G Russ or Kurt?
Kurt.
Kurt's.
What mind?
I'm good.
Your mind.
Jan said she's good.
I'm good, thank you.
G Russ.
I would like to know where, where are we getting all this money to hire all these positions?
Which ones?
Well, like the fire chief, the assistant fire chief, um, the assistant clerk. I, I'm not, I'm not objecting to these positions. I'm just.
The fire chief, the fire chief and the assist, assistant chief, if, if you look into the proposal, not the proposal, but the budget that was passed, it included funds coming from the short-term rental because most of the short-term rentals are the ones that are causing us to have all these calls. I think Wit would back that up. Um, so the registration fees, uh, will cover those, tho, those positions there. The assistant clerk, I'm gonna leave that one to chat.
I mean, basically, assistant clerk, um, the director of planning and the officer open, those are all things that are already in the budget. The clerk was in the budget for, since to be, you know, for quite a while. The director of planning has been there since Dick was here. Um, that's that position. Um, and we have the crew members, not an additional crew member, that's still, we're still trying to replace Terry McDonald. One of the issues we're having with is with this, the current pandemic and things of that nature is replacing even people that we've already lost.
Right.
And the, the bookkeeper for future, it's basically, the TIF comes in, there's gonna be a lot of work there, but there, there is funding for that and there is the, um, the increase of the, um, property values or whatever, as it goes up, should cover it because we still get to keep fifteen percent of that until the bonds paid off. It's a great question though, but the, the big one, the big one is the chief and the assistant chief. And it's coming from, it's not coming from taxpayers' property taxes. It's in the registration program.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks, Jerry.
You're welcome.
That's it. So I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session for legal personnel, I guess.
In favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that I'm out of executive session at eight twelve.
In favor?
Aye.
Um, as far as the short-term rental, um, as long as you guys are in agreement with what we talked about in there, I'll approach the person tomorrow morning and make sure it goes and I'll get back to you as.
Okay.
So, since it's.
Very good.
Legal or whatever, trying to get something done.
Mm-hmm.
I'll keep quiet until she accepts it. I'll keep quiet until she accepts it.
Okay.
Very good.
Um, then the other thing that we had spoke about, um, that I had asked, whatever, can you go over the police department?
Oh, the police department.
So it's recorded.
Yep, we had a, an analysis done of the police department to look at our future needs. And also formation of certain parts of the police department, looking at staffing, looking at. Uh, some different process issues and that was about ten thousand dollars, which is why that. Fund is, or was it twelve thousand, was the full twelve thousand and that's why that police department fund is is over budget at this time and. We're going to relocate that to a different part of the budget as it was not a least correct expense.
Great. Thanks a lot, Chad. Motion to adjourn at eight thirteen.
Thank you.